Welcome, everybody. We will start the April 11th joint meeting, and I'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Flag is to my left.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Let's do introductions, and I'll start on my left. Go ahead, Mr. Whitford.
Mark Whitford, Board of Finance.
Jackie Olson, District Two.
Sebastian Panietto, District One, City Council.
Andrew Howe, City Council, District Three.
Jeff Cagiano.
Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District Three.
Board of Finance.
John Mays, Board of Finance.
And we will do, I think we have two. We'll start with you, Ron.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
And Glenn.
Glenn Heiser, Board of Finance.
And I'll do an introduction for Susan Tyler, Council, District Two. So we have a quorum, and we're good to go. First agenda item is number one, which is the approval of the regular joint meeting on March 14th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, changes, or additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I got a pause there. Anybody opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We have the consent calendar, which is A through I. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent calendar?
To the chair.
Yep.
Yes, I'd like to withdraw 2B.
2B, okay. On the ARPA, Route Six. Anything else? I will entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar, A and C through I.
Move motion.
Second.
Second.
Marie O'Brien has joined us as well. I don't know if you saw that. That's good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Jackie, if you want to give me a motion to go ahead and approve 2B?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Calendar 2B to make additional appropriation totaling $692,800 within the coronavirus recovery fund to Route Six infrastructure and manager fees.
Second.
Great. And Jackie, I'll let you first go ahead and ask maybe your question or bring up whatever you'd like, and we can have further discussion if need be and get some clarification.
Question I have is, first of all, what does UHY stand for? And what was their specific role as manager fees?
So UHY is the advisor that we have hired. It's really the auditor and the person that manages our ARPA funding. That was done actually before we were elected, which is why you might not recognize that. But they have been making sure that we have all the paperwork in line and have everything we need and making sure that we're following all of the very strict and, quite honestly, cumbersome rules that the federal government has laid out for the ARPA funding.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions on this item from anybody else or any other comments?
To the chair. I did see that there was a rescind there of $25,000 appropriation to Novo Precision. Was that, are those contingent upon each other? That those are linked in that item?
No. And Diane, you might help me with this, but I believe that we just had, we had allocated the funds to Novo Precision, and we have had a couple of different programs. We had the first grant. We've also had building Bristol, building a better Bristol grant. So as we're going through the process, we're finding that some businesses in this case didn't feel that the money was something that they could use at this time or they just didn't fully understand the program. So they're giving us that money back. And I think the two line items match because of what, Diane?
We just have to reverse the allocating the revenue and then putting it back into the appropriation. So it just has to...
It's in accounting.
Yeah, it's more or less an accounting thing.
Okay.
We might see a couple more of these. I can give a little bit of an ARPA update later as well, too. But very good questions. Does anybody on the Joint Board have any further questions on item 2B? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. We're going to move to number three, which is to make an additional appropriation of $650,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the Mellon Street Bridge, which is funded by the Federal Bridge Grant Program.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five is to adopt the recommended changes to the Senior Homeowner Relief Program as presented and forwarded to the City Council, which we do. I did, huh?
Yeah.
Sorry. Number four, excuse me, let's do four first. To decrease the appropriation by $440,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the Mellon Street Bridge funded by bonding. So this is related to the one before it.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this one? Good catch, Cheryl. Cheryl, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I was excited about this one, too, by the way. So this is the, to adopt the recommended changes of Senior Homeowner Relief Program as presented and forwarded to the City Council.
So move.
Second.
Great. And I would just make a comment on this one. One of the reasons I'm excited is this is now a program that will take the relief up to $500 for seniors that qualify 65 years or older in their home for the last five years, making less than $60,000 a year. We know it's going to be a tough year from both the economy and what's happened with our reval. So this is a great way to make sure that they get some relief. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none. We are good. We're on to the monthly revenue and expense report presentation. For those that are listening in the audience and watching on Nutmeg TV, Ron Burns reminds me always that these items go very quickly because these are things that have come through committees and have been vetted, and it's pretty pro forma for us to go through these quickly. But we don't want to go through the monthly revenue and expenses quickly, Diane, so you can take your time.
Okay. Well, I will let you know that right now, as I've been reporting, revenues have been coming in very strong. The current tax revenues were at 99% of collections right now through the end of March. So we still have a few months left to go, and so we will definitely exceed, on a budget perspective anyway, 99% of the budget. The motor vehicles up, I think right now that is trending at coming in at around $2 million, and we had budgeted 1.5. So again, just watching those to make sure that what I was anticipating is actually going to happen. Building permit fees still coming in strong. Right now, we're at 110% of budget. Again, this is through the end of March, so we have three months to go and probably three very busy months for the building office. And then conveyance taxes are at 175% of budget. So we're at 1.5 million. Compared to last year, we were at 166%. So, and we did actually increase the budget a little bit this year, so actually, that's doing pretty well. Investment earnings, I'll just talk about that for a minute. Right now, we are at 225% of budget compared to 43.1% in the prior year. Interest rates right now have been very favorable. I did ask the Treasurer's Office for some additional information on the investments through, that we currently have and what it's earning. So right now, we had budgeted $275,000 through the end of March. I just want to say, actually, interest has only been allocated through February. We are at $622,000. Last year, I think in total, we took in about $275,000. So we're doing very well. CDs right now, we actually have $143.7 million invested, and that's in CDs and agencies and money market accounts. For those that aren't aware, we can't invest in just anything. We are limited by statute to invest in just CDs and government agencies. Interest rates right now, we're getting 0.08% on one fund, one money market. And stiff right now, where we do have the majority of the funds, is earning 4.87%. So significantly higher than where we were last year at this time. And the CDs and agencies, those are all laddered, so they kind of mature over the next, mature at different times throughout the next few years. That is earning right now 0.4% to 5.15%. And as some of those CDs mature, they'll get reinvested, and hopefully, as interest rates are going up, we can invest those at higher rates. So that's a summary of where we are with investment earnings. So that will also generate, I think the Treasurer's Office had estimated that we will collect about $950,000 in total in investment earnings through the end of the year. So that's all very positive news, considering the last couple of years in that revenue line item. Not too much to note on expenditures. We have been monitoring the fuel. We did set aside some funds, as you know, to address increases in fuel. But I think right now, I think we may be okay within the overall budget to handle and absorb that, so we may not need to use that. And if we don't, it will be good to have for next year as well with all of these commodities that everything keeps increasing. And we do have, I just looked roughly, $800,000 remaining in contingency. So that's good to know through the end of March to have that, that we budget a million, and so far, we've used only $200,000. ARPA, we, I know the mayor will speak about this later. We do have, we did meet yesterday. The ARPA Task Force met yesterday. Right now, the balance to obligate, we are down to $223,000. So out of the 27 million, 27.8 million, that is where we are right now. And I will say, city projects total 17.9 million of that total. So that money is allocated, and as you know, that needs to be allocated by the end of December of 2024. And we will be getting ready to submit the report for the month of, for the quarter. The quarter ended in March. I just made a note. We are still working on the budget. The next budget workshop is next Wednesday at 6:00 with the Board of Finance, and then their adoption date is April 25th, following Tuesday. And joint meeting adoption is a month later, May 15th, actually, a month from this coming Monday. And we did close on our bonds, so we are about $30 million cash rich right now. So actually, I think probably maybe 20 because I think 10 of that had already been spent. And that was, we did receive an interest rate of 3.299863, and I think very impressive that we received 14 bids. I know when we did open the bids, and I know I sent it out to the council and to the Board of Finance when we issued, that's a lot. I think that's probably the most I've ever seen in a long time. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions?
Go ahead, Mark.
Through the chair, can I ask a few questions? Looking at the motor vehicle, it looks like the uncollected is about 9.3%. I mean, I know they say, you know, pre-COVID, 40% of people live paycheck to paycheck. Post-COVID, it's like 60%. I know the government changed your registration from two to three years. Is there anything that like shows that like this is something that's going to impact? Like, I don't know if going from two to three years, if I know I got my registration and I don't pay my taxes, you know, not to say these people think differently, but if they have to put food on their table or pay taxes, they may, you know, is there something that trends to say, was it always nine or was it, you know, 2015, it was at like 5%? Like, it just seems pretty high that that's close to 10% that's currently uncollected.
Are you talking about the 9.34% on the motor vehicle? That's pretty standard, actually. The collection rate on the motor vehicle portion of the grant list is a lot less than 99.1 that the tax collector has been collecting on the real estate. So that is really nothing to be concerned of. Though I do know that going to the three-year registration has had a slight impact, but because that is not trending as high as the real estate and the personal property, that's normal.
Okay. That's what I was curious, if that going from two to three did have somewhat of an impact for us.
A slight one, yes.
Okay. And then my other question, if, and it could be any page. I asked this before about the wages. When we think of the budget, if you go to page, say, 21, we're through, you know, three-fourths of the year. If I look at the line for, first line for regular wages at the bottom for, I think it's Street Division, they have a budget of 1.9. Actual year-to-date is 1.3, 67.9%. If you go, even if you go above that one to the one for building maintenance, you know, 4.9 budget or a 3 point, $490,336K for year-to-date expenditure, they're at 70%. If we were to take all of those wages for every single one of those lines, I think I didn't see any that were near 75%. We had the additional people retire this year. Is there some way, it looks like it'd be over $1 million? Like, where is that million? Because if everyone's running actuals less than their plan, then we should have that bucket of money sitting somewhere.
So what will happen is if, if there are retirements, this is just one example, say, in the Streets Division, so they might have a vacancy right now. When someone retires, they get their retirement, they get their sick and vacation payout. That does not get charged to this line item. So that gets charged to a different line item in the budget under compensated absences. And at the end of the year, when we do our year-end closeout, we will use the, under, the balances that are available in these funds to offset that compensated balance account. So it's really, you have to look at it at the end of the year. And we also, there are some vacancies in these divisions as well. So there will be, they won't be at 100%.
Correct. I'm just trying to, is there any way we can get an estimate of that? So, you know, like here, just for that one line item?
Through the end of the year?
Well, through three quarters of the year. So far to date, you know, if I looked at, it looked like, you know, when I add them all up, anything less than 75% and you, you know, it looks like there's over $1 million, but I agree, we paid out something. But I'm just trying to figure out, like, where are these buckets, you know, sitting? Like, is this money sitting with these guys? And not to say they are, but are they going out and buying a tractor at year-end?
No, they can't.
You know, not to say, but that's what I'm trying to figure out. It's sitting somewhere. So then, when they ask for, you know, an increase of, say, 5%, and we're sitting on $1 million, does this million help offset so we don't do a 5% increase? Or is this million sits there and it just carries over year over year?
It does not carry over year over year. All appropriations lapse at the end of the year that's, that are in the general fund. So that does not carry over. Anything that is remaining at the end of the year, like I said, we would use that to help close out some of the other accounts. If the Public Works Director said he needs to purchase a vehicle, and he says, and he comes to the Board of Finance and he says, "I want to purchase a vehicle. I have $30,000 remaining in my wage account." He has to come to the Board of Finance to get that approved. He cannot just go out and purchase that on his own.
Okay.
He has to come to this board and then the joint meeting as well.
Gotcha. Is there any way we could see year over year how we've done in prior years? Because I know this was an odd year where we had additional, like, 70 people retire. But at the end of this year, we'll see, you know, we had the million, we paid out. I just don't know, like, the benefits that we pay out when these people cash in their vacation time, are we, you know, we have a million, but we paid out 2 million? Or we have a million, we paid out 500,000, so we have an extra, you know, 500,000? And just year over year, just curious to see how this moves. You know, are we, is this a plus or is this a minus for us?
You can look at the budget reports, have a lot of that information. It does have prior year. So the budget reports that the Board of Finance did receive when everybody was doing their budget presentations, there is comparisons to the prior year on those reports. So you can actually see what was actually spent versus what was budgeted.
And that includes the cash out for the?
The cash out would be in the compensated absences account.
Okay, in their budget?
No, in employee benefits budget.
That's what I'm saying. So at year-end, if I look at their number, that doesn't include that cash out.
It does not include the cash out.
That's what I'm saying. Is there any way to look at, here's the extra money
We can give you...
and cash out, so we can see how we're...
I can give you detail of the compensated absences by account at the end of the year. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Diane? John? John, yeah.
About a month ago, Diane received a letter from the nominating chair of the Government Financial Officers Association, which sounds like another association, except it has 19,000 members. And the Government Financial Officers Association has a whole host of responsibilities. Some of you are familiar with Gatsby. Some of you don't want to comment about Gatsby, but it is the governing board of financial accounting in this country and parts of Canada. The fact that Diane was nominated to be a member of the Executive Committee is just an outstanding accomplishment. And as far as I'm concerned, I think the members of the Board of Finance would agree with me that she really exhibits the epitome of a chief financial officer of a operation which is now in excess of a $200 million business. And I think that, number one, she's an example of some of the fine department heads we have in this city, number one. And number two, she stands above many because of the responsibilities and the way that her office functions and supports not only the Joint Board, the Board of Finance, but department heads on a daily basis. And so, you know, the mayor put something in, in his Facebook page. Some of us folks don't subscribe to Facebook. We're not attuned to that. But I would offer that, and the reason I bring it up is I would want, as part of the minutes, that we are proud of you, Diane. Thank you for your efforts. And I should comment that, and I'm not sure how many years ago, that your father was also a chief financial officer of municipalities, also served in a similar position.
He did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Diane.
Congratulations.
Here, here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. If I could just say though, I mean, I have the full support of the council, Board of Finance, and it's just, could not have done it without all that support either. So it's, it is a great honor to serve on this committee. So I'm excited. It'll be, it'll be a great tribute, especially, it'll put Bristol on the map a little bit, too.
Yeah. Great national recognition.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I don't think we have any other business to come before this meeting, so I'll entertain a motion.
Can I bring this one up?
Oh, yes, you may.
What do they want to bring up? And as most of you guys know, I have an actuarial background and I've been doing some analysis on some of our pension and some of the retiree healthcare. You know, when I look at now, you know, we did a great job in getting at 3.3% for borrowing. But going forward, I think we all know that the occurrence in street environment, that's probably not going to happen. We're definitely going to have to be paying more, maybe probably double, given the fact that today, I think the six-month treasury is at over 5%. We have an unfunded retiree healthcare balance of about $70 million. If you actually look at per retiree, we have 350 retirees. We pay out about 6.6 million on the actual assumptions, but I think we're actually over by a million. Roughly, it's about $20,000 a year. So each person who retires, 10 years, 200,000. Inflation's higher than regular, it's like $400,000. So when you look at today, retiree and debt, it's about 10% of our tax revenue. I estimated, looking at some of the analysis and the growth, the additional people retiring and what we're paying out, we could be in five to six years close to 20% between debt, if interest rates go up, and retiree healthcare. So one thing, from my perspective, I think that is a concern that I don't know what we do with this retiree healthcare. I don't understand the benefits. I don't know how you guys go about putting it out there. I don't know how much goes to, you know, Florida. How much are we exporting to others? So I am talking to Diane to look into this, but it is something that I just wanted to bring up that we do have this $70 million debt that our current, that was, let's see, it's been growing by about $4 million a year. So it was $4 million last year. If we don't put in that amount of money. So just think of it that perspective, where it's a pay-as-you-go, and on top of it, we have to build this thing up. And it's supposed to be 150 million in 15, 16 years. So I'm not sure what we can do for retiree healthcare, but it is something that, you know, I hate to say it's the elephant in the room, but if this blows up, you know, cities have not gone bankrupt in a while. We saw what happened with the banks. When one goes down, it opens up the floodgates to say, who else is like this bank? So when that first city blows up and says, oh, it's retiree healthcare, I don't think we want to be on the side to say that we did nothing and we're one of those ones. So I just wanted to bring that up. It's something I think I have a concern that.
Appreciate your comments. It will be something that we will continue to look through on the Board of Finance and the subcommittees as well. So I encourage you to stay with that theme. We'll just mention that unlike, I think, almost any city in the whole country, our retirement fund is still 128% funded. We've been very fiscally responsible, and we want to continue to do that. But I appreciate you bringing it up, Mark, and we'll continue to look at it in the subcommittees. All right. I think we're good for this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Joint Board.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We'll give John Smith the second here because they were tied. So Marie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Repose? We will just take a quick five-minute break. We'll start at 7:15. All right. 7:16, we are going to call the City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 11th, to order and start with the pledge of allegiance to my left.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republicans, which stands "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Let's first do introductions. I'm going to start to my right this time.
Hi, Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District Three.
Jeff Cagiano, Mayor.
Andrew Howe, District Three.
Sebastian Panietto, District One, City Council.
Jaclyn Olson, City Council, District Two.
Sue Tyler, District Two.
Great. Thank you, everybody. For opening ceremonies tonight, just want to make a quick comment. There is definitely Yukon Husky fever throughout the entire state, and I am not kidding you. I've had no less than 15 requests to have a Donovan Klingon Day or a parade or some kind of celebration. And I will remind everybody that Donovan is a freshman at the University of Connecticut, and they are in classes and he'll have exams coming up. But I will let all of you know that I have gotten in touch with Donovan. We've texted back and forth. I've talked with his dad. We would love to do something, but we're going to leave it in Donovan's shoes, those are big shoes to fill, to decide how we celebrate him and what we do. If you all remember, when they won the state championship last year, we recognized the entire team here. So he's already thinking about that. And so perhaps in our next May meeting, we might be able to do that. You can still funnel ideas of what you'd like to see on Donovan Klingon Day or Kling Kong Day, and I'll entertain them. But hopefully, we can do something in the very near future.
Mumpest.
Yeah. By the way, there has already been some talk about him being involved in the Mump Festival and maybe a parade participant. So we will, we will work on those types of things. I do not have a moment of silence. I think we're going to end on a very positive note with what happened with Yukon and Bristol Zone. Number two, we have resignations. So Erica, I'm going to ask you to read the resignations.
Derek Jones resigned from the Energy Commission and the Diversity Council. Kelly Pacheco-Houston resigned from the Diversity Council. Robert Parenti resigned from ESER/ARP Committee. It's a subcommittee for the Board of Ed.
Yep.
Eric Rosengren resigned from the Board of Assessment Appeals. Attorney Jason Welch resigned from Corporation Council effective April 6th. And Sharon Crowicki, the Republican Register of Voters, resigned effective April 28th.
That's quite the list, and this is why we put this up front on the list. So we're going to move into number three, which is appointments.
Through the chair.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignations, place it on file and send letters of thanks to each of those who served.
Second.
Thank you, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. That motion carries. As I was saying, there's an awful lot of movement from the last month that's going to create a big ripple effect, and that's why you see resignations and appointments up front. So the first thing that I do want to do is I want to do the appointment for City Council. So I will entertain a motion for Eric Rosengren to replace Jolene Lucitani, who resigned and finished the term through the 2023 municipal election.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Eric. We're actually going to do the swearing in so that Eric can join us up here. And I got to get some pictures. I got, I got pictures. We'll make sure we get them.
Do you soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut and its laws, the ordinances of the city of Bristol enacted pursuant thereto, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a City Council member according to the best of your knowledge and ability? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
All right. So I do have a long list, as I talked about. This first one is actually pretty good because when you get the new guy, you put the new guy on a commission that we've had a hard time getting to. So I'll entertain a motion to, for the Bristol Housing Authority to replace Andrew Howe with Eric Rosengren as the council liaison.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
He did it. He seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. For the next one, need a little bit of an introduction on this one. So extremely proud... on this one. So, extremely proud, and it is a bittersweet moment, because unfortunately, we lost Jason Welch. We had him for about a year. Jason is outstanding. He's had connections in the state senate. He was somebody who is, you know, tried and true Bristol, and jumped in right away, and was extremely beneficial to our office. So, we, we hate to lose Jason, and as we heard, he resigned. The reason he resigned is he was appointed a judgeship, and I've done a little research on this. I'm not going to be 100% adamant about it, but I think he is one of our, our first and only in least recent history, Superior Court Judges from the city of Bristol. So, it's a huge accomplishment. Anybody that knows Jason knows that he's a tremendous asset to whatever he does, a huge loss to us, but we need to move on. So, Cheryl, I have a motion that I'd like you to read, so, and thanks to Jason, too, because in leaving, he has actually helped us find a replacement right away, which is a nice thing for him to do.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to appoint Scott Matney, a part-time Assistant Corporation Counsel, that will begin following the successful completion of pre-employment process.
Second.
Great. You know, Scott is a, is a good friend of Jason. He's from Southington. He does an awful lot of real estate law, and he'll step in and hopefully fill his shoes, which are very big shoes to fill. As the motion said, we'll, we'll work on the process to get him going, but hopefully, it'll be relatively quickly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. In the same theme of having to replace vacancies, on the Board of Assessment Appeals, which Eric Rosengren just came off of, we would like to entertain a motion to appoint Fay Duquette, who will replace Eric Rosengren, who resigned, and she will finish the term through the 2023 municipal election.
So moved.
Second.
And Fay is here as well. Thank you, Fay. Fay has actually been acting as an alternate on the Board of Assessment Appeals. The great news about Fay being an alternate this year of all years is with revale this year, one of the most hectic, craziest years that we will probably ever have, but any revale year is tough, but obviously, this year it's been even tougher. So, she is filling some shoes, but has some great experience, and thank you, Fay, very much for stepping up and agreeing to do this, assuming that we all vote yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, I think that's kind of catching up with all the others, and we have a bunch of others here, so we'll go through them. On the City Arts and Culture Commission, we would like to reappoint Juliet Norton. Her term is set to expire on 4/26.
Move approval.
Second.
So Juliet's been serving. Any comments or questions here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next is Board of Ethics, and I didn't explain this well at last City Council meeting, so I want to make sure this is clear for everybody. The Board of Ethics is set up. It's hopefully never, ever called, but each council person, as well as myself as mayor, gets to appoint an individual person to make up the Board of Ethics, in case there is an ethics complaint or violation. And the Board of Ethics gets carried on or assigned to people. Since we've turned over that board completely, the appointment for this particular individual is Joan Cludier, and we are going to reappoint Joan Cludier to a term that will expire by 4/26, and that appointment is specific by Andrew Howe. So, this is not anything we have to vote on, but we just want to make sure that it was put into the record. All right. Next is the Parking Authority, and we can do a motion with both of these together. We're going to, we are going to reappoint Andrea Adams for a term that will expire on 4/26, and reappoint Mike Mazzarelli for that same term that will expire on 4/26.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We move along to the City Energy Commission, and we are going to replace Derek Jones, who just resigned, with Mark Dickow, and that term will expire in 9/25.
Move approval. Second.
Mark is in the audience, too, as well. Thanks, Mark, for stepping up. I've actually been talking with Mark for, I don't know, five or six months, and we've, we found a fit for him, which is great. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The Esser ARP Board, we have a motion to replace Robert Parenti, who resigned on 3/22/23, and we would like to replace him with John Lotovico. This has no term. This is very similar to the ARPA Task Force.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now, to the ARPA Task Force, as you all have heard, another quick shout-out to Cindy Bombard. Cindy is doing this right, by the way. She is resigning from the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce, and she's making sure that she's not on any boards and commissions and is really retiring. She could have stayed, but I think she made a very good, right decision, and so, we will entertain a motion to replace Cindy Bombard with Katie DiAgostino, who is the new Central Connecticut Chamber Director. And that also is no expiration to that term for the ARPA Task Force.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Transportation, which is a great committee that has gotten reinvigorated, and with everything happening downtown, it's, it's good timing. Greg Klimic, we would like to appoint to fill a term that expires on 1/24, and I forget who they're replacing. We looked that up earlier. Erica, do we know? Do you remember?
Yes.
Doesn't matter, because we have the term correctly, that it's going to expire on 1/24. We'll figure it out after.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And, good, last but least, on the Water and Sewer Board, we are going to replace Derek Jones with William Cunningham to fill the term that expires on 12/24.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Did I miss anybody?
Would you like to do the department head appointment now or later?
Oh, no, we, we should do that now as well, too. So, I didn't write it, I didn't write that one down. Can you give it to me?
Nancy Levesque.
Oh, that's right. Nancy, who is here in the audience. I'm so sorry. Nancy, how can we affect you? Forget you. So, we will entertain a motion to, to reappoint Nancy Levesque to City Engineer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a great shout-out to Nancy. So, as bad as I mess that up, I get a chance to say that we are struggling to find engineers anywhere in the state, and it's very difficult, and Nancy has really done extra work above and beyond. We really appreciate what you're doing. We actually have hired a recruiter to get more city engineers. If anybody knows any engineers, have them please get in contact with us, and we'll do it after. Okay? We have to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I didn't forget anybody now, did I? Very good. All right. Thank you. So, that was the hardest part of the night. I think we'll, we'll move along hopefully much better now, too. Number four, approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting as of March 14th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Now, we're on to public participation. Number five, do we have any? We have somebody that signed up. And for those that are on Zoom, we might have one or two. We'll get to you second, but we're going to do the room first.
Mr. Friedrich.
Mr. Friedrich, please come up to the microphone. If you can just state your full name and your address for the record for us, that would be great.
Peter Friedrich, 42 Century Drive. In 1925, a radical new organization was founded in India. It was called the RSS. Now, how does this connect to Bristol? It was a time of upheaval. The Indian independence movement was in full swing, seeking to throw off the colonial yoke of the British Empire, just as we did here in America 150 years before that. But, the RSS had a very different concern. The RSS was convinced that the problem in India was not colonial domination, but rather that the subcontinent was not a theocratic Hindu state. The RSS believed that the real problem in India was not foreign rulers, but rather Indians who followed religions of their own choice. The RSS taught that Indian Muslims and Christians are foreign to India, internal threats to the region, and indeed even traitors, simply for belonging to a different faith. The RSS soon mushroomed into a sizable, all-male, armed, paramilitary organization, and as it developed, the RSS looked over to the fascists in Mussolini's Italy and the Nazis in Hitler's Germany, and said, hey, the totalitarian system that those guys have developed is something that we need here in India, and the way they're treating minorities is exactly how we should treat minorities here in India. So, what does all of this have to do with the city of Bristol, here in the state of Connecticut? Well, in 1948, right as India achieved independence from the British Empire, RSS members who emigrated from the subcontinent founded an organization called the Hindu Swamsevak Songh, or HSS. The HSS served as the international wing of the RSS, and over ensuing decades, HSS chapters took root all around the world. In the 80s, the HSS was founded here in America. In the 80s, the RSS also founded a political party in India called the BJP. And in 2014, the BJP, as the political wing of this fascist RSS paramilitary, rose to national power. Well, before the BJP took power here in America, leaders in the HSS worked to make sure that the extremist BJP won in India. They organized phone banks to call from America to India to tell voters to vote for the BJP, and many of them even traveled back to India to serve as boots-on-the-ground to campaign for the BJP. Here in America, the HSS essentially operates as a partisan Indian political organization to support a supremacist, anti-minority regime back in India. And in spite of its dubious connections, the HSS in Connecticut has also simultaneously infiltrated city councils throughout this state to obtain formal recognitions and proclamations, platforming and praising it for its charitable and cultural work, work which masks and whitewashes its true nature as the international wing of India's fascist RSS paramilitary. Therefore, I implore the city of Bristol, if and when you ever are approached by the HSS, as so many other cities in this state have been already, to please keep these facts in mind before offering them your stamp of approval. Why? Because your support for the HSS here in America could unintentionally strengthen the fascist RSS BJP regime back in India at a moment today, when they are currently unleashing genocidal forces against the minorities, the religious minorities of that country. Thank you. And I have here for every member of the council, a small information packet about the organization about which I just spoke.
Yep, you can leave it there. We'll, we'll pass it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the education. Are there any, is there anybody else signed up in the audience? How about on Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to number six, which is the announcements, and I'm going to start on my far left, give Eric a little time, maybe, to get organized, if he has any. Go ahead, Sue.
Just one for this month. The Bristol Police Department, during the month of April, will be concentrating their efforts on distracted driving campaigns. As we all know, distracted driving directly is related to fatal motor vehicle accidents and accidents with injuries. Just to kind of give everybody a little bit of idea of the fines that they can face if they are caught distracted driving. First offense, $200. Second offense, $375. And a third offense is $625. So, even though this campaign is going on during the month of April, I think that the message that we should all kind of embrace is that we shouldn't just avoid distracted driving during the month of April. This is a behavior that really makes our roads a lot more dangerous. So, our police department, thanks to our police department, they'll be out in force in April to try to reduce and gain compliance in this area.
Thanks, Sue. Jackie?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple. The Water and Sewer Department has released a video titled "The Journey of Our Water." This video, which was created by Dawn Labella, the Office Manager of the Water and Sewer Department, is informative and well worth watching. The video is available for viewing on YouTube, as well as their website. When you go onto their website, you will see this. I don't know if you can see that. So, if you click on that, it'll bring you right to the video. And while you're there, you might want to sign up to receive notification alerts for water and/or sewer emergency breaks, hydrant flushing, scheduled construction repairs, offers hour changes, and water restrictions. The other thing that I have is, next Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the Public Library, the Commission for Persons with Disabilities is having a special meeting. The meeting will be hosted by a member of the Fire Department, Police Department, Emergency Response, and an EMS. And the purpose of the meeting is to address how they would handle various situations involving members of our deaf community. I recommend that you attend if you can. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Sebastian?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick announcements. The Parks Department will be holding the grand opening of the Pigeon Hill Preserve to the public on Saturday, April 22nd, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, which will include Environmental Learning Centers of Connecticut volunteers taking community members on tours of the trails and answering questions. Following that session, the park will be formally open and ready for use from dawn to dusk. So, this is next to the Barnes and Nature Center on Shrub Road, a big project that spanned a couple administrations, and we've had state support as well. So, we're glad to see it come to fruition, and we'll, we'll have that event on April 22nd. In addition, this Sunday, the 16th, St. Gregory's Church and the Knights of Columbus are sponsoring a breakfast to benefit the Bristol Adult Resource Center from 8:00 AM to noon at the St. Gregory CCD Center at 1043 Stafford Avenue. Eggs, home fries, pancakes, et cetera, will be available. $10 at the door and $5 for kids under 10. So, that's this Sunday. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. Andrew?
None for me this month.
Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with that this weekend is the OM Show, and it's a, I believe, 80th year, or many, many years of this performance. There are still tickets available. It is Friday night, and, which is the 14th, and Saturday, the 15th. It's $40, which includes a show and a meal, and you can go to the OM Keystone Facebook page for tickets, or if anybody needs a connection, see me or call me, and I will connect you on how to get those tickets. That's this weekend.
At the Carousel Museum.
At the Carousel Museum. It's being cabaret-style. So, it's, I know that the performers have been practicing for months now, and it's going to be an exciting show. Additionally, on April 22nd, in celebration with Earth Day, is our annual community cleanup day. And this is a time you can join your neighbors to help clean up several areas throughout the city. There are some designated target locations that we have in mind to clean up, but supplies will be made available on the day of the event, between 8:00 and 10:00 AM, at the Parks Recreation and Youth Community Services Offices at 51 High Street. And supplies will include garbage bags, gloves, t-shirt, and safety guidelines. So, hopefully, we can get everybody out to do a portion of the community, and all participate in this Earth Day event. And then, lastly, I would like to get on everybody's calendar. I've mentioned this before, but plans are really firming up for the Cultural Arts Day. This is brought to you by the City's Arts and Culture Committee. This is in conjunction with Museum Day. So, while our museums will be having free admission and participating in this, we've also have several businesses that are held within our cultural district that will also be offering different, maybe beverages or art and entertainment. But we will be holding some festivities on the Federal Hill Green from 12:00 to 4:00, including music, food, and there'll be some face painting and some other kind of talents. Right now, we have a call-out for artists who want to display and sell their artwork. We're taking those appointments or those reservations. We'd like to limit it to about 12 artists. So, if you need more information, you can go to the city's Facebook page for the City Arts and Culture Committee, or again, see me, and we'll get it on Bristol All Heart. Thank you, sir.
Great. Eric, no pressure, but I did, did want to give you a chance. You can at least say hello, which you did, which is good, so. All right. I have three of them, actually, one that I had forgotten about. First, First, I want to talk a little bit about the Rockwell Theater, and the school is putting together a gala Broadway on the Boulevard that's featuring a special guest, who is Kevin Rapone, who has some connections to the city. I'm actually a little bit upset that, well, first of all, I wasn't invited directly, but they can't do it on my schedule. I actually have a family wedding that week, and I will not be able to attend. It's $50 per person, it's a formal dress, or 1920s period dress expected. Sounds like an awful lot of fun, I am sorry that I am going to miss it. I do want to continue to work better with the Board of Education, but I bring that up because this is our theater. This is a community theater that was started by a fund that was put into place through the Memorial Boulevard's Arts and Culture Commission, and is supposed to be serving the theater, and this will drive economic and community development. So this is our theater. I'm asking the council and anybody listening to continue to work closely with the Board of Education to make sure that we can get our programs there. We've had some fits and starts through the inability to hire somebody to run the theater program here, but we are 100% committed to this. Again, I'm sorry I'm missing this, so I hope that we have great attendance there. One thing that I won't miss is something that just got put out there, so I was working with Josh and the Parks and Recreation and Youth Services Director. We have an idea that was brought up when we launched the first ARPA project with the workout facility in Rockwell, and it's been on the calendar, and I kind of forgot about it, so I'm not in great shape for it, so that's good. Anybody can come out. April 15th, this Saturday, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, we're going to kind of tour the pair of fitness equipment throughout Rockwell Park. So we're calling it Workout with the Mayor, and I think it should actually be kind of a fun event. Andrew?
The mayor says he's running from City Hall down there and then to do.
I am, so I will walk from place to place, but I will do a run ahead of time, I promise. All right. The last thing that I do want to talk about, which is one that I know the whole community will come together for, and is extremely important. So Mississauga University, which is the university that Alec Ayarado graduated from, had asked the city of Bristol to host a game against Stevenson Institute. It's one of their home games, but they're going to move their home game to Muzzy Field on tomorrow night, Wednesday night, the 12th. Could not be better weather for a baseball game tomorrow night. Game starts at 6:00 PM. There are tickets that will be available at the door. I'm very hopeful that we sell out this event, so anybody here who has not seen it on Facebook, and John Smith's gone, so I think everybody else here is on Facebook, I'm looking around, you can share the event, let your family and friends know. All of the proceeds from this game will go directly to the two fallen officers through Fund the First, or directly to them, I don't know exactly how they're going to do it, but it's all going to the fallen officers. Mission BBQ is going to help out with all of the food, and should be a great day for baseball to kind of kick off baseball season here. So very near and dear to our hearts, as we all will remember, this is literally, and I don't know if they planned it this way or not, the six-month anniversary of that tragic night. So those are all the announcements I have. Did we forget anything? Anybody? No? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I did have one more, because following the event of Broadway on the 6th, the Bristol Coral Society is doing Broadway Classics on May 7th, the very next day. They'll be having their spring concert.
Oh, excellent.
Also at the Rockwell Theater.
Good, so we are filling that theater and getting things done. I like to hear that. Excellent. Let's move on to the Consent Calendar, which is number seven. There are items A through N. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the Consent Calendar? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, I gotta go find where the end of this one is. We go all the way down to number eight, which is Reports and Committee Reports. We'll start with 8A, which is the Salary Committee, so that's you. Cheryl, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Salary Committee meets monthly, and we do have one item we'd like to bring forward for approval. And this is a motion to accept proposed changes to salary and benefits for non-bargaining employees as proposed, and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on this?
The changes basically follow the increases and the changes that were made to the recent contract for the Bristol Professionals, and so, which has typically been done to adopt those same salary increases.
And 233 as well, so.
233 as well.
Still starting contract negotiations with some other units and waiting on 1338. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Cheryl, we'll stay there. Do you have any committee reports or liaison reports that you'd like to give?
I would just like to bring, because we've been, you know, I did mention the Community Cleanup Day, but that's one day. But we've been working very closely on the matter of litter. As you know, we have several independent groups among the town that are doing a wonderful job going out and picking up litter. But we also wanted to make sure that everybody recognized that Public Works takes this very serious, and it was a matter of a lot of discussion in our committee. There are several streets that they have identified for the team to go out and work using pickers and trash bags, the vacuum hoses and sweepers, and those, I have a list which I won't read. In addition, we worked greatly on how to impact this, and some of the things that we're considering or getting put in place are additional street litter barrels, so that people who have something to throw away have better access if they don't want to hold those in their cars, where we currently have purchased 50 additional barrels, so these will go out across the town for both recycling and for trash. Sweet city street sweeping, try saying that fast five times, is already underway. We sweep 234 miles of the city. This is done, we have four street sweepers that are out and starting, as I mentioned. The Ordinance Committee is reviewing some changes for littering. In addition, we have an ability through some of the city staff to issue a citation for locations that are not conforming. So if we have a business primarily, or a homeowner, they can be referred to blight, but the business can be sent a citation through our Public Works Department. And lastly, the Beautify Bristol Litter Cleanup Guide has been finalized. This document is available for any group that would like to get involved in beautifying Bristol and cleaning up. What it does is it outlines some great ideas on how you should organize, what you should do for materials, with the idea of safety, and what to do with the waste once you do collect, how to organize a big group event, and what to do if you need additional support from Public Works. This is all in this document that is available on the Public Works website. I will have it posted on my Facebook page, it's available on the Public Works Agenda, and we'll make sure this gets out to groups. So if anybody has any concerns on how to start this, or what they should do, or what they should do with the items, they can refer to this. As always, I'm sure you could call any of us, or call Lindsay at Public Works. She's a great resource for answering any question that has to do with trash. But I think it's important for people to know that the team has taken litter very seriously and is doing what they can to make sure Bristol is attractive. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. I think we'll move to 8B, which is Real Estate Committee.
This one stems from a citizen who's been working with the Real Estate Committee for several months now to donate a few parcels of property to the city. So Mr. Mayor, the motion I have is I hereby move that the city of Bristol accept the donation from David Pallaya as recommended by the Bristol Planning Commission at its meeting of January 30th, 2023, the following parcels of real estate at no purchase cost to the city of Bristol. However, appraisals are required in order for Mr. Pallaya to complete his income tax returns. Assessor's map 43, Lot 98-1, Frederick Street, the Park Department shall pay for the appraisal of this property as it is interested in ownership and control. Assessor's map 40, Lot 3, Broad Street, the Department of Public Works shall pay for the appraisal as it plans on utilizing this property for city projects. Appraiser's map 43, Lot 96, Twining Street, Mr. David Pallaya and the city of Bristol shall share equally in the cost of its appraisal. I further move that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for informational purposes and to Corporation Council's office to effectuate this transaction.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Anything else to add? We've been talking about these properties quite a bit, I think we all visited it, and there'd be some use to the city, so thank you very much to the Pallaya family for donating that land. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're moving on to C, D, and E, really, and F, actually, G, sorry, C through G for Ordinance Committee, a lot of changes in ordinance, so we'll take them one at a time, but go ahead with C.
Okay, Ordinance Committee's been very busy. So the first item up is, this is in regards to, we actually have three public hearings we're looking to set tonight. So the first one, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol. I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances be introduced this date pertaining to Section 2-23B waived.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now, go ahead.
Okay, motion to introduce, in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 4:45 PM, in the Police Complex Center, 131 North Main Street, Meeting Room 1, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing, and that the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
A second?
Second.
Any other thing to add? I don't think so, I think we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. On to the next one, which is D.
Under 8D. Okay. Again, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol. I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced on this date pertaining to Section 22-85 be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, motion to introduce, in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 4:50 PM, in the Police Complex Center, 131 North Main Street, Meeting Room 1, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Go on to E.
I make a motion to read the reading, to waive the reading, in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances be introduced this date pertaining to Section 23-1 be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to introduce, in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 4:50 PM, in the Police Complex Center, 131 North Main Street, Meeting Room 1, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're on to F.
This is continuing our efforts of kind of going through the different ordinances and getting rid of outdated language and sections of ordinances. So I make a motion, I hereby move that Chapter 15, Article 4, Areas Prohibited to Child Sex Offenders of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as followed. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and the additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. Additions are underlined and deletions are bracketed.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Last one, right, G.
This one is with pertaining to our new Fair Rent Commission. And if I, okay, so let me just make a motion first. I hereby move that Chapter 12, Article 12, Chapter 12, Article 12, Fair Rent Commission, Section 12-180 through 12-189 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days of the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. Additions are underlined and deletions are bracketed.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Second. Oh, Eric gets a second. Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Sorry, did you want to say something about it? Sorry, I've been flying through.
Just really, really quick, I just kind of wanted to again thank Attorney Jason Welch, who started with the Task Force, and then when it carried over into ordinance, and I'd like to thank the rest of our Corporation Council, but I'd also like to thank the chairman of our Task Force for the Fair Rent Commission, John Fitzgerald, and all of the other members who served on the Task Force. This was a really complex, heavy task force to put together, commission to put together, and they really went above and beyond, and I just wanted to kind of thank them all.
And I was going to add too, so I think you did it very well, but we hope that many of them will want to continue on to now the Fair Rent Commission. And those that are interested, that are maybe watching, or have friends in the audience, we will need to fill this commission. The likelihood is that we will be doing that at our next May council meeting. And by state statute, this has all been created by state mandate, and we need to have that up and running by July 1st, but we should beat that deadline pretty easily. And again, thank you to Jason Welch for the great work that he did on that. So great.
Through the chair?
Yep.
Just to mention, and thank you for asking, who wants to be on it, but we probably could share that we need at least two who have been landlords for at least one year prior to the appointment, two shall have been tenants for at least one year prior to the appointment, and three shall be electors who were not a landlord or a tenant at the time of appointment. So that kind of.
For at least one year.
For at least one year.
Yep.
So it kind of, kind of makes it a little bit more selective on who can serve on this.
Yep. And putting the puzzle pieces together are going to be difficult, because I believe the alternates also have to be, you know, renter, landlord, et cetera. So the more people that want to be interested in this, the better, and hopefully, we can work through all of this before the May meeting. So again, a huge call out to people to continue to send your information into the mayor's office if you're interested in serving. All right. Any committee reports or liaison reports that you'd like to deliver to us, Susan?
Code enforcement, I really don't have much of an update this month, but I will promise that next month we will have a very detailed, updated report. I kind of dropped the ball a little bit this month, but, so I will.
Very understandable, and I appreciate what you're doing with what you're going through. And maybe I'll just add too, by the way, we are really moving along very well under this committee.
this committee meeting and having some discussions on the side as well between fire commissioners or fire marshal and our building officials to make sure that they're working collaboratively. I think we had 40 or 50 different properties that we talked about at the Code Enforcement meeting earlier this month, and it's always going to be the first Wednesday of the month, so please keep those in. I do have one quick thing that I want to report on that, and this is the way it works, which is great. A great business that we've seen on King Street was cleaned up very quickly because it wasn't a business address, but you know, that's what Code Enforcement does, and I think people are noticing that we're holding everybody accountable. So that's the kind of stuff that we'll see more reports of, and I think, thank you for all your work you're doing on that.
And just finally, for the, on the Police Commission, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to, I don't have all of the details, but we are hiring.
Yes.
It's all over social media, and you can go on to the Bristol Police Department's webpage or Facebook page, but we are looking to hire entry-level police officers.
Yep, and that is both certified officers as well that we're hiring, but this call out is for the testing period, which I think starts in early May. So by May 4th, people need to sign online. So we are definitely open for business when it comes to our police force. Excellent. Anything else, Susan?
I think that's it.
Very good. Jackie, you have anything?
I do not have any reports this month.
Okay. Sebastian?
Nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
And Andrew?
Just one. It's the monthly reminder from me that it's time to register for kindergarten. Any child who'll be five years old on or before January 1st, 2024 is eligible. You can find all the forms needed on the Bristol Public Schools website, and I encourage families to register early. All children who fully register by the end of the school year will be entered into a drawing to ride the first day of kindergarten on a fire truck. Also, there is good planning for a Family Fun Day at June 17th from 11 to 3:00 at Bristol Eastern High School, is free for all families. If there's an organization that is interested in participating, please reach out to Donna Cosier at Dcosier@wwwwestcentralconnecticut.org. That's it for me.
Thank you. Andrew? Cheryl? Anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I neglected to report in on the Transportation Committee. I just wanted to share the good news you shared with me and the fact that Connecticut Transit is looking at an additional route that will include our Bristol Adult Education and that corner where we're going to have, we have the new conference center, we have ESPN, so this is good news. We're not quite sure when this will be coming, but we've been after them for quite some time, expressing how important to include those locations and a bus route will be for those attending at those properties. And just one last thing, the committee is, we haven't quite been approached, but we've been approached by a company that might be interested in doing scooters in the community, and we've done the research. You can see them in Hartford and some other bigger communities. And so we just kind of want to put this out there that if anybody has a thought on this, if they like them, and I see a negative over there, but I just, we just want to hear from people in the, you know, in the city, you know, before we take this on or even before we, you know, broach a contract or serious deliberations with a group. So if anybody has a thought on this besides the head nun, please feel free to seek me out or any of us on the Transportation Committee. Thank you.
I have to make two comments, because one, I just don't want to overpromise. So we know with the busing on the Route 229 corridor that it's currently in the Connecticut DOT in Governor's Budget, so they have looked at it. Not a guarantee, because we're still in session, so I don't want to overpromise. And the other thing that I know your committee's been talking about, that has been open conversations with Director Ukulito, is that microbusing is something that we could look into. So, you know, we need to keep busing here in Bristol, but I still challenge anybody to find five people on a bus in Bristol. I quite haven't seen one yet myself, and I'm in Bristol an awful lot now. So I think the idea of keeping the bus routes and making them microbusing routes is where Bristol is right now. Maybe someday we'll grow into the larger buses with the downtown development. And then with regards to the scooters, I just have to let you know that I think I was elected in office for less than a month, and Bird Scooter came in and we had a conversation, and I laughed him out of the office and said, "There is absolutely no way we're bringing scooters into the town," because the main reason was, "We just don't have that downtown area." These things are pretty cool because they can GPS lock these in. I guess it's a good thing for us to brag about a $6.85 million grant that will help us really make the Route 72 corridor possible for scooters down the road. So I think you should look into it, I think you should collect a lot of information, and we might be closer to scooters than we were before.
We just kind of want to collect what public thought is, you know, and if we don't feel there's going to be a lot of people who want to use them, probably not. But, so right now, we're just exploring.
It's good, and we are looking at a bike, potential bike path as well, all the way from Rockwell over there, so that would be more conducive to scooters as well. But we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it for our Committee Reports, so we will move on to Old Business, and I will set this up a little bit too, because we had a good conversation right before the meeting, is we've talked a lot about the Senior Home Tax Credit, and the way it worked was it started here at City Council, went back to the Board of Finance to make sure that it would fit and that we have the money to go ahead and fund it, came back through Joint Board, so guess what? In Old Business, we need to make it official and put our last stamp of approval on it, so I'll have you read the motion under Old Business.
With that preamble, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that I move that the City of Bristol adopt the amendments to the Senior Homeowner Relief Program as approved by the Board of Finance.
Second.
I don't think we need to talk about this any longer, you guys are sick of me hearing it, talking about it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Under New Business Number 10, Erica, I don't think we have any from you, anybody in the council have any new business? I'm not aware of any. Okay, we'll move on to Number 11, which is to amend the contract 2P 21-031B with the Motto Downs Joint Venture in the amount of $117,914.65 and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute. Well, you're going to give me a motion?
So moved.
Oh, that's fine. And a second. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 12 is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute an agreement with EverSource Energy to install switch gears within an easement located northeast of Hope Street at a cost of $104,479.77.
Move approval.
We're going to give Jackie the motion.
I'll second.
Cheryl, the second. This is in conjunction with the Carrier Project, where we have switch gears that have to be moved and that we're basically paying for the switch gears, the way I understand this. Ray is on vacation, and he's on Zoom, so he wanted to be here for this one in case there were any questions, but I'm not sure that there's any questions, are there? Any questions on this one?
Are you kidding? He's just got his name on there, he's not there.
No, I'm sure he's there. Ray, you can say hello. Go ahead though, Sue.
Oh, I'm here, Mayor. Certainly, if there's any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thanks, Ray.
He even answered an email for me earlier today. I felt bad.
Your family's not going to be happy, Ray. Go ahead, Sue, do you have a question?
When are we set to close on this?
So we are not closing anytime very soon, like in the next day or two, but next week we should sit back down with the carriers to finalize any amendments from the original agreements that were made prior to many of us, and then we will finalize on that deal hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And they would like to close in the early May timeframe to go ahead and start that project and get in the ground. Ray, I was pretty good on that, right?
Yes. Yeah, you summarize, you know, the, you know, the purpose of the agreement is really to facilitate a relocation of switch gears and actually, you know, install the switch gear, so it's not just relocating them from the corner of Hope and North Main Street, it's also the cost that EverSource to supply the switch gears would ultimately power the entire development, which is Wheeler Carrier and, you know, even, you know, quite frankly, a portion of Bristol Hospital and our proposed ramp garage.
Excellent.
So this isn't specifically related just to the Carrier Project?
No, this is for the whole area, but it is located on their, on the property that they are looking to acquire and build on.
Thank you.
All right. With no further questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Ray. Go back to your family, please. Number 13, to award contract 2C 23-062, which permanent, which is permanent patching of utility trenches in city streets to Leyden Industries LLC in the amount of $164,600 and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on this one or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And number 14, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor in accordance with the provisions of Section 28-24-7 of the Regulations of the State of Connecticut North Central as a CMed provider, as recipient of its regional medic, emergency telecommunications service credit for the Coordinated Medical Emergency Direction, which is CMed Services, for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and we're going to refer this to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. The value of Bristol's credit for this budget year is $18,198.30.
Move approval.
Second.
And this is, we did the same thing last year, this is a yearly thing for us. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're on to Number 15, and I just want to do a little prelude here. We were trying to get to the chief's individual contract as quickly as we could, and there's been a lot of fast-moving parts here. I know that Attorney Corwicky is not here as well too, and we've been going back and forth even in the last day, so I am going to entertain a motion to table this to either a special meeting if we need to do it, or to our next City Council meeting. There's no real rush in this, we thought we were there, but we want to make sure that everybody is comfortable on this, so I'll entertain a motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. This is actually great news because we don't have to go into executive session tonight, so unless there's any other business to come before us, we will be able to conclude our meeting. Does anybody else have any other business?
Nothing.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.